All right, I'll call to order a regular meeting of the Wellington Board of Selectmen. Today is Monday, November 2nd, 2020. It's 6:30 PM. The first item on the agenda, or the next item on the agenda, is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. We have our regular minutes from October 19th and then a very short set of minutes from a special meeting on October 23rd. So I will move to accept the minutes from October 19th as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Liza. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and I'll ask you to repeat your name and I'll tell you why when we're done.
Aye, John Blessington.
Aye, Erica Waschinsky.
Aye, Liza Borat.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Motion carries. And I do that for a couple of reasons. We, I don't often go back and watch these videos, but when you do, you see everybody's name here on screen. If people go back to the YouTube to watch them, your name does not, in fact, appear under your video. So we had been in the habit, when we first started Zooming, to say our name before we spoke. So folks that were listening knew who we were. We always kind of assume that they know us, but not necessarily. So especially in a vote for voting purposes, I'll make sure that we say our name.
We need to get our little name placards, and then we can just like
Little name tags.
It's very nice badges.
Hold up a yes or a no with our name.
Right.
Yeah, going back and watching, I said, so anyone who's not on camera doesn't come up in the video. So we may have 20 people on, and there may only be four videos on, so it's, it's interesting. For sure. All right, so that leaves us with the second set of minutes. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from our October 23rd special meeting.
I'll second John Blessington.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, John Blessington.
Aye, Erica Waschinsky. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain, Liza Borat.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to present to speak. If you are on the phone, on video, and would like to speak, on video is not a requirement. You can unmute yourself. I ask you to identify yourself for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Yes, Miss Cunningham.
Hi, Michelle Doucette Cunningham, 41 Lisker Road. I noticed that on your agenda tonight is the filling of the library board position, and I have already written to the board in support of Joan Taraskowitz on my, on behalf of the Democratic Town Committee of Wellington. I've known Joan for more than 10 years. She was one of the very first people I met when I moved to Wellington. She's always impressed me with her sharp mind and her passion for education. She's a retired teacher, has worked both in Hartford and Putnam. She's also worked with the Eastern Connecticut folks' performances at the Packing House and has been attending some of the library, Friends of the Library meetings as well. So she's very, very much a passionate reader, and I think she would be a tremendous addition to the library board, someone who has the time to devote to really working on the policy of the library board, as well as bringing her commitment to education and services to the town of Wellington. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present to speak? Yes, Karen Anne.
Okay, Karen Anne Caldwell.
If I could ask you to speak up a little bit, it's a little hard to hear you.
All right. I happen to be treasurer of the library board, and I have to concur with what Michelle said. Joan was
Oh, we're losing your volume here, Karen Anne.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Actually, I, you, you can see you're now looking just at my neck. Get that close, just to bring my microphone to work. Um, I'm just saying, I have to concur with what Michelle said. Granted, I've only been in town a little over two years, but Joan was one of the very first people that I did meet in town, and I have been very impressed with Joan, and I know that she has wanted a position on the library board, and so I would be happy to say she'd be a great member of the library.
Thank you. Anyone else present to speak? Okay, there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting for anyone who would like to speak at that time as well. Excuse me, so I thank you. Moving on, the next item is correspondence. Believe it or lot or not, we don't have any correspondence to report for this two-week period. So I'll move on to first selectmen's status update. I'll start again with tomorrow's 2020 presidential election. I'm gonna mention yet again, in-person voting for register, already registered voters is at Hall School in the gymnasium, not at the town office building. The town office building will be used for Election Day registration and absentee ballot counting. So as of 4:00 PM this afternoon, the town clerk's office has issued 1,110 absentee ballots and have had returned 981 of those. So that's 83, 88.3% of the ballots that were issued have been returned. Just for information purposes, one of our registered voters are good about statistics. So Wellington currently, as of today, has 3,683 registered voters, and so 30% of those voters requested absentee ballots. Absentee ballots can still be returned to the ballot box that's outside the front door at the town office building until 8:00 PM tomorrow night on election night. So at 8:00 PM, the town clerks will check the box and then lock that box so that no other ballots can be collected and would not be counted after 8:00 PM. And they will, again, they'll be counted here at the town office building. In what is our typical poll room will be the absentee ballot count, central counting for absentee ballots. I've been working with the registrar's office and Troop C to ensure that our residents and our voters feel safe. We certainly are experiencing some unsettling political times with this national election, and so Troop C will have a presence at both of our locations at different times so that, so if you see them, it may not be that there's an issue, they're just kind of going to come through both of our polling locations so that we can ensure safety on Election Day. We've never had an issue here in Wellington. We don't anticipate any issues. I expect, as normal, that our residents will respect each other and allow for voting without issue here in Wellington, but we took some precautions just to be on the safe side. The assistant, assistant assessor position, we have the hiring committee selected Joan Oris, and she will begin on Monday, the 16th of November. So we were fortunate to have a wonderful selection of candidates, and this was a tough decision, but we believe Joan will be the best for Wellington, and so we look forward to working with her. And I think that's the end of our hiring, knock on wood, for right now. Look, I knocked on something. The emergency communications task force met the 28th. We'll meet again on Wednesday, the 18th of November at 6:30. Our last meeting, we had a demonstration of the Code Red OnSolve product, and we discussed a survey that we'd like to push out to residents, hopefully shortly after our next meeting. So the meeting, and you can see that demonstration from Code Red and talk about that product on our YouTube channel. And so we'll share the link, it's off of our main page, you can see online meetings. We'll take you to our YouTube page, and so folks can hear about that. Steve Grant, we're still waiting. I'm not really sure the numbers of projects that were submitted and the amount of dollars that were set aside to me says everyone who submitted a project should be accepted, so they're the governor's level right now, so hopefully we'll hear by the time we meet again, and I'll have something else to report. That's all I have currently for selectmen's status update. John or Liza, any questions? Public Works, Troy's gonna give us his update.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right. Did the trash at the park again. Roadside mowing is still continuing. Jeff Hanson has been working on servicing the vehicles. We put out the Vote Tuesday signs last week. We cleaned up the shop and we actually got ready for a snowstorm there we had on Friday. We've been, the crew has actually been down working in the park installing the lights. We've been down there. We moved voting machines over to Hall School, and we went and got some blocks for the new buildings that, like the carports that'll be put up at all schools that will start building this week. We chipped brush from the storm that still needs to be done. Catch basin cleaning is still going on. I talked to them today, and they said about another two weeks and we'll have all our catch basins cleaned. And that's actually with a vac truck this year, not the clamshell, so they were actually backed out. We trimmed brush around the baseball field at the town office building, and we fixed some curb in a few spots. That's basically what we did.
It doesn't, it may not sound like much, but many of those projects take quite a bit of time to get done. So, and thank you for all your help with the schools, and then with our change in voting locations, that's a big undertaking for everyone. Right, so we'll move on to new business. Troy gets to stay on with us. The first item is, I wanted to have a discussion about our public works fleet, so our trucks. And we've had quite a bit of issues with the vehicles needing tremendous amount of repairs. We put off some purchases because we made some changes to CIP year one because of COVID and not knowing back in May where we would be financially. So if you recall, we, we put some things off that weren't emergent. But Troy wanted to talk with us about some concerns he has with our vehicles so that, you know, you all, as a board, we'd be prepared to hear these concerns as we go into budget season. If something were to happen to one of these vehicles, it won't be a surprise to us, and if we needed to go forward to ask for something else. All right, so I don't know if each of you got a copy of the email Troy sent over today. No? Okay. Troy shared some information with us today, so Troy, if you want to talk to us a little bit.
All right, I know the whole CIP with the COVID there, we had some problems when we pushed back the trucks, but we really this year have to look into either purchasing some newer vehicles. We're spending a lot of money on certain trucks that should have been replaced a long time ago. I'll give an example, right now Truck 5, it's a 2012 International. As of July, right now, we spent $14,000 on it, and it was just come, it's just coming back from the shop tomorrow, and I don't have that bill. We're constantly having problems with this truck.
This is a truck that would be set to be replaced
This year.
If we, if our plan had gone through as planned, it would be in what will be the year one, so ideally come July 1, this truck will be replaced, but we've already put 14,000 plus whatever bill we get from today.
Truck 3 is the F-450. That's used to plow the parking lots. It's the little mason dump. That truck's 13 years old. As of right now, since July, we've put $9,366 into that truck to get it operational. The truck that I drive is a 2001, and since July, we put $6,371 into that vehicle. Those were, those three trucks, besides Lou's truck, were supposed to be replaced. So I just want to give you guys a heads up that these trucks aren't getting any, nowhere, they're getting older, they're getting used every day, and we rely on these trucks every single day to do our jobs. And with the breakdowns, it's making things harder, especially going into the winter time. We've got everything up and running now, but it's, it's a constant fear of breakdowns. Erica knows I talk to her all the time about it. So I just want to give you guys a heads up, if something happens, we don't have extra spare vehicles. If there, these vehicles were replaced last year, we could have kept them. They'd be used for just emergency use, but now we're using them every single day. We have a 2001 Chevy Silverado. It's got 206,000 miles on it. It's in rough shape.
Is that the maroon truck?
That's the maroon truck.
The body is rotting out.
Body's rotting off of it. It's, it's barely holding together. These vehicles need, we need to really start paying attention to some of these vehicles.
So I'll share with you all that the Truck 3, which is the 2007 Ford 450 that Troy spoke about, the Green Mason Dump, which we put $9,000 into, was originally on year one of CIP to be replaced at the cost of $38,000. And again, we've now put $10,000 into this truck, so we really didn't have much of a choice. We needed to repair the vehicles we had because a new truck wasn't an option. There wasn't funding for that. And then Troy's truck, which at this point we've put 6,300, almost $6,400, was again set to be replaced in what was our original plan for CIP for 2021, along with a plow, not Truck 5, but another one. So what we're gonna see is a backup of vehicles, and I think, you know, we're really going to need to support those CIP projects and funds, and, and really need to take a look at, you know, replacing these vehicles because the, the cost to repair them, and I feel as though, Troy, the same way, that we're just putting constant Band-Aids on them, just waiting for the next one thing breaks, we get it repaired. Troy comes to me and said it's something completely different that has gone on things, so we knew at CIP that we were gonna have a backup of these public works vehicles and COVID and in our funding choices and changes due to COVID really has made that a little bit more impactful. So what we're, what I'm afraid of is that the next time Troy calls me to tell me a truck is out of service, it's gonna be that it's out of service for the last time, and that they're not gonna be able to repair it, or it's gonna be, you know, 10 to $20,000 for a vehicle's replacement, that would be $38,000. So then we have to weigh what it is that, that we do to put that kind of repairs into a vehicle that could be replaced for the same cost. So wanted to discuss with you all so that you're aware, and we can talk about what we think we need to do going forward. Questions, thoughts?
I mean, right now, since we don't have like any specific plan, it's hard to, to know, or a specific proposal, it's hard to know what to say other than, you know, I hear ya. That makes sense. At some point, everybody has to do that with a vehicle, determine, you know, are we gonna replace the transmission, or are we just gonna go buy a new Honda Civic? You know, like, everybody has some decisions to make, and so will we. I don't, I mean, I don't know that I'm hearing that there's any specific decision that we need to make today other than knowing that this is likely something that's on the horizon for us in the not-too-distant future, is getting a call that at some point we're gonna need to replace something or do a significant repair. So short of that, I'm not sure what to say other than, yeah, it sounds like we should be expecting something.
You know, I, if something were to go with one of these vehicles, what, you know, Troy and I might be coming to you all with is, you know, we need to go to Board of Finance and ask for the, the full amount of a truck to, to purchase that truck so that we can get one sooner. Whether or not that could happen is up in the air, right? So typically with our plow trucks, we have leased them, and that is a significant time issue. So there's the town meeting, there's a Board of Finance meeting, there's town meetings, there's putting out an RFP for a lease, there's Board of Select meeting, so it, it does take the significant amount of time if we're going to go in that direction. What we may find ourselves in come winter season, if something were to happen with one of these vehicles, is purchasing a vehicle outright instead of leasing, that, you know, would take some of the strain off of CIP if we purchased a vehicle in full, and it's not something we'd like to do just on the fly. So, you know, I am gonna go into CIP really pushing for a plan for our vehicles based on Troy's recommendations. We'll be getting those submissions ready here shortly. But any, anything is possible. There's not a time he walks in and the word truck or vehicle comes out of his mouth, I don't just cringe, I'm waiting. That's gonna be the time the shoe drops. But I wanted you to be aware of the significant amount of dollars that we're putting into repairs, and we do not have a large enough budget for these things, so we're having to move funds from, from other areas to cover all of these expenses. Now, some of these repairs that Troy, the numbers Troy shared with you are, are over two fiscal years, because somewhere before July, correct, Troy? Are these all been from July?
Since Truck 5 since been, since July.
So $14,000.
And there's another bill coming.
And what's your total budget for vehicle maintenance?
It's around 60,000.
So, I mean, that's just one vehicle. So, you know, we just, we really need to be cognizant of how we're replacing and maintaining our trucks moving forward, and I think that some of the issue has been the maintenance on them that's led us to the problem we have with them right now. Plus, they're used every day. We aren't one of those larger towns that has trucks they use just for plows, and they have another set they use for other items. We use the same trucks every day for everything that we're doing, so. Cross your fingers, hope that there's no snow, and then our trucks stay working. I'm sorry, snow people. Those who like snow, and we're hoping for no snow, so. Although Troy assured me that that October snowstorm means that it's a light winter, right? I'll believe it when it happens. So what the Farmer's Almanack says, is that what it is, or? That true, John?
Wasn't that October 29th, wasn't that the day we had back in 2011? Was the day when we had that snowstorm, was that?
I think technically it was the 28th, but it was pretty much the same time, yeah.
Yeah, wasn't that? Easy winter, or? I don't think it was, but.
I don't remember. I'd have to go back and look. He says that I tell him that I don't believe it, but snow and I don't get along. So hopefully, we can just plan for next fiscal year. We'll come to you with any of these, but wanted you to be aware of what's happening, so if suddenly, you know, I say we need to go before Board of Finance, this isn't the first time the Board of Selection are hearing about the issues and concerns with our trucks.
Erica, can I say one more thing?
Of course you can.
That 450, just to let everybody know, that 450 was at a shop for about a month and a half, so we didn't, we were waiting for the people that were working on the truck, we're actually waiting for parts, so we were down that vehicle.
Spent at two different shops, right?
Yeah, I went to two different shops, yeah. And it's, so it's, that's the downtime is where we use these vehicles. It's not just, oh, we can put it to the side, no big deal. It's, we need these vehicles. And when they're gone for a month and a half, we have to rearrange everything to try to do what we're limited.
So for Friday's snowstorm, thankfully, it was minimal. We didn't have that truck available, so it was just one less vehicle we had at our disposal. No, it was Todd's truck we had at our disposal. All right, anything else, Troy?
Nope.
Or Liza? Okay. I'll move on to, and Troy, you can stay with us, or we'd be, I think I speak for the rest of the board, it would be okay if you ended your evening with us, too. I'll move on to item B, which is a library board appointment. The library board member, Carrie Donaldson, sent a letter to my office, the library director and the library board of directors on September 28th, indicating her resignation, and her resignation was finally received October 23rd by the town clerk's office. So since that time, we've received letters of interest from two individuals. Joanne, I apologize. Taraskowitz? Is that close? Okay. Joanne sent a letter of interest to the selectmen's office, and we also received a letter from the Democratic Town Committee endorsing Joanne. Rebecca Cardavino has sent us a letter of interest as well, and then third, and is shared with you in your packet, we received a letter from a third party for this board to consider Melissa Omquist. I have not heard from Melissa, nor did we receive anything formally, so I'm not sure if she was interested in, in the position, but we did receive a letter from a resident asking us to consider that individual. So, there's a lot happening here. So there are, John?
I would like to request that we table this appointment till the next meeting. The Republican Town Committee is searching and talking to people here and trying to make a decision on who we would like to endorse, and Kerry was elected on the Republican, on the Republican ticket, and I think that would count for something that so we'd like to have another two weeks to find, to endorse somebody.
Liza, your thoughts?
Sorry, I couldn't find the end yet. I mean, the, you know, the meeting was noticed and warned. We hadn't heard from anybody. The, yes, the outgoing person is Republican. There has been meetings of the Republican Town Committee since this resignation happened, both officially and, I think, I'm hearing some feedback. I'm not sure if it's me or if it's the system. But I mean, we've, we have a couple of candidates, and there has been lots of time for other candidates and nominations to come forward. So I'm not sure how long we're supposed to hang on to, hang on to the open appointment. So, I mean.
I'm gonna unmute. I, I agree, Liza. On October 23rd, I do know that the town clerk indicated that she, there are several people contacting our office on the regular basis, waiting for the formal resignation to come in, so they were informed all at the same time. We did get from, an endorsement from one town committee. I've heard nothing from the head of the RTC either to indicate that they were still looking, they would like a little bit more time, or endorsing a candidate. I do know that, Heather, I'm not sure if there's anyone in the waiting room of this meeting, there were, the, the two candidates that did submit letters individually were both on the line, and I think had both indicated to us that they wanted to speak if we gave them the opportunity, but I see that they're gone, so I'm not sure if they have connection issues or not, so if they come back on, oh, there's one. Joanne, if you're able to unmute yourself, I'd like to give them the opportunity. You know, it was enough that individuals were, you know, got enough to send their name. I'm sorry that the Republican Town Committee hasn't found what they believe to be a viable candidate at this point, but the library board, since prior to September 28th, has been without this member, and we all know that they have some big concerns happening over at the library. John, you thought it was very important that we get on them. I think it's just as important that we give them a full board to do the work that they need to do. So I'd like to give those folks, if they're on the line, the opportunity to share anything they'd like with us. We do have their letters, so if they wanted to share anything in that or beyond that, I'd like to give them the opportunity to talk, so I can see Joanne here. Joanne, would you like to speak to us?
Yes, thank you very much for inviting me to do that. I think the library really needs to become more of an integral part of the town. And that's why I'm very interested in the board. It seems like we have many things going on in the town that aren't well-integrated sometimes. For instance, doing cooperative programs between the library and maybe the rec department, and combining things like that, so we end up servicing more people in more different ways and giving them the opportunity to do it. So the library is very vital. If you're going to have a very good town and you're going to attract really interesting people to the town, this is an important part of it. So I, that's why I'm interested in the board. So I, that's why I'm interested in the board. And I also think that we have to um straighten out a few things at, that has happened there. We need to move forward in a very positive direction. We need to be um, get rid of all the the rhubarb that's gone on, all of the stuff, kind of um, let's say, problems that have gone on and move forward. We've got a wonderful facility. It's just fantastic. I can't get over that. It's just beautiful. And we don't take full advantage of it. We don't take full advantage of the people or we don't take full advantage of the facility. And it might be time to start doing that. Okay?
Do you have questions? I appreciate it. And I, and I'm, I'm sorry that Rebecca isn't on here. Um, again, she did send us a very comprehensive letter. And just so you know, her letter came um to us a couple of times. So you may or may not have a couple of different versions of it. Um, and um, so I, you know, I know that she was seriously interested in, in this position as well. And hopefully you took the time um to read her letter. And I would say, you know, uh, of the individuals, um, you know, we have to consider here that we um it, it's an appointment just until the next municipal election, which is a year from now, um, until um next November. So uh, at that point, um, anyone who was appointed to that seat, if they so chose um to move forward, would then have to um be on the ballot and then elected um at the next municipal election. So it would be, in this instance, a one-year appointment.
Joan, can you pronounce your last name for me, please?
Last name is Tarasiewicz.
Tarasiewicz, okay.
Pretty good. Yeah, I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry.
You just look at it and attack it and you'll probably get it right.
There you go. I'm familiar with that kind of name.
I'd like to make a motion to um appoint Joan Tarasiewicz to fill a vacancy on the library board of directors. Um, I don't have the dates in front of me. I'm just.
It would be uh November third, twenty twenty, expiring November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Uh, beginning November third, twenty twenty, expiring November, what did you say?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second Erica Waschinsky. Discussion. John, you're muted.
I'm sorry. If I can ask, uh, Joanne, uh, you know, you're aware of the problems that we've had in the past of the uh, with the directors of the library, I assume. Uh, do you have any idea on um replacing the director?
Well, you know, John, I'm probably going to go a little head-to-head here on, with you on this one, but um in order to get somebody in the directorship, you, you have to offer them a package that they can't easily turn down. Okay? There has to be a good package to them and you've got to vet people very carefully. We're better off to wait to replace them than to replace too early and replace with the, with the wrong person. So it may take that, there's got to be some discussion about how much you pay them. It's got to be discussion as to what kind of backgrounds you want. And I think it has to fulfill the mission statement of the library. And that's kind of a tough thing to do, but until you get all those ducks in a row, probably people are just going to come in and leave again. And that's not, that's not good for the town. That's not good at all.
Um, the uh uh, what was uh? I'm going to read here if I can find the right paper. Uh, when the uh previous director or the previous chair of the uh library board uh left, she's stepping down. She wrote a letter. Uh, and she said this, "It is my deeply held belief that the current state of the library cannot be fixed by a board of laypeople, no matter how good our intentions are. I believe that our finances, building, maintenance, legal issues and policies are in such a state that we need to hire outside consultants to fix them. It is simply unfair and unreasonable to ask unpaid volunteers to resolve years of mismanagement via once-a-month Zoom meetings. Based on what I know about our town, it is unlikely that the library will ever get the funding to hire such consultants. Now, what do you think about this?"
Well, if you're going to hire people, you have to pay them. If you're going to hire a good director who's got experience in this, you gotta pay them. That's why I said, I think you and I might have a little head-to-head on this because we've had discussions like this before over various issues. Um, but you have to look at people's backgrounds very carefully and bring them in. And there's got to be a plan. There has to be a mission. There has to be a good plan. And maybe those things have to be developed before you hire the next person. The person should fit your job. The job should not be altered to meet the person. Can you see what I mean? And that seems to be the way that would be the best way to uh in business or in education or anything. Find, define your job and fit the person to it. And yes, there is going to have to be a lot of cleanup from what I understand. Although granted, I've been on the outside looking in so far. So um we have to plan and we have to decide what to do.
Uh, any other discussion?
Well, I would, I agree on part of what you say there. We are going to uh, we need to hire somebody who can do the job as a director. And the reason I read this was because they have, but they have the money. They have the money to hire somebody, but instead we've been fooling around and somebody's getting paid. There's, we have a co-interim director who's not a co-interim director because.
John, I'll remind you that the motion is whether or not to appoint uh Joanne to the um library board. So uh I'm not sure that a discussion on the things that the library board has and has not done to this point is relevant to the motion.
Uh, wouldn't it be relevant because I want to find out what we might expect to happen in the future with a uh new, new member on the board?
Mm-hmm. That's reasonable. That's reasonable.
So, to me.
The library board is also a six-member board. So anyone where, you know, at this point, we're asking questions of is, is not going to be able to determine what the entire board i- is going to do going forward. I think we've heard from Joanne where she stands um on this issue. But again, there's a lot of information that she may or may not um be privy to from public meetings. Um, there were some executive sessions held there with some information held. Um, and again, the you know, the motion is whether or not to appoint Joanne.
And, and also the library is a six-member board with three Democratic um are members and two Republican members. This would make it a four to two four to two uh ratio there. And uh, we can't, we Republicans would kind of uh not like to lose that because we'd like to get someone to um who can, who will basically agree with me. And I, I know Joan, Joanne and I agree with uh, on some things, but we kind of disagree on others. So I'm uh
I hope someone on the library board that would like to further see our library um benefit our town um run adequately. Uh, I, I think that's what's important of a library board member um to me. It's not whether or not they agree with me as a selectman or first selectman. I think that is um probably not um the most important thing. It's somebody who wants to serve the library and the residents of Wellington um on the library. And it looks like we may have lost um Joanne. So I will uh ask if there's no further discussion. We call for a vote. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, Liza Borat.
Aye, Erica Waschinsky.
Nay, John Blessington.
That was two ayes, one nay. The ayes have it. Um, I'd like to thank um all of those who uh asked to be considered um for this position. And thank you for uh your willingness to serve um not just the library, but the town of Wellington as a whole. So um, Joanne will um, I, I thank you. We'll get you out some information on um what to do next. And again, it's a one-year appointment. All right. The next item on our agenda are tax refunds. I will move to refund uh Nissan Infinity LT, a certificate of correction in the amount of sixty-six dollar, oh, excuse me, sixty-six dollars and forty-three cents.
Second?
Seconded by Liza. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, John Blessington.
Aye, Liza Borat.
Aye, Erica Waschinsky. Motion carries. I would uh move to refund Melanie Tran a certificate of correction in the amount of one hundred, one dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second, John Blessington.
So uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, Erica Waschinsky.
Aye, John Blessington.
Aye, Liza Borat.
Thank you all. All right. Moving on, the next item is the ever-important looking forward out of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one uh holiday schedule. Um, you have a proposed draft schedule in your packet of holidays that are observed um by the town office building and our staff. The days um of the holiday, not the day closed, but the days are spelled out um in our current CBA, and that's where they come from. So there are standard holidays. There are a few um Christmas, next year, Christmas, um Fourth of July and New Year's all fall on a Saturday. So the day off is the Friday prior. Um, and because of those alterations, um I'm suggesting Selectman's Day, which is um a holiday, another holiday we do, or October, Tuesday, October twelfth. So that would make a longer weekend. Um, as you can imagine, it's difficult to find a holiday that doesn't interrupt with some of the um busier times of year here, whether it be tax season, um budget season, which tends to go on and on. Um, our public works department doesn't work um Fridays in the summer. So coordinating all of that left a, a nice October timeframe that might not interfere. So I would make a motion to accept the um twenty twenty-one holiday schedule as proposed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor? Aye, Erica Waschinsky.
Aye.
Aye, Liza Borat.
All right.
You gotta do the roll call next time.
We do. So we need to get Heather a microphone. She doesn't have a, a microphone um and camera on her computer.
Okay.
You bet she'll be able to take a roll call for us.
Okay. That'll be a little less clunky.
A little. Um, we'll go in alphabetical order. The next item on our agenda is the twenty twenty-one um Board of Selectmen regular meeting agenda. So you have here our draft proposed agenda this year because Fourth of July is a um a Sunday and the holiday is celebrated on a Monday. You'll see that we now have four Tuesday meetings, which are always our favorite instead of the Mondays, um because the holiday falls on a Monday. So our third, sec-, either first or third Monday of the month would fall on a Tuesday. And I will move to accept um the Board of Selectmen regular meeting schedule for twenty twenty-one as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Throw in a few easy things there at the end of this meeting. All right. All those in favor? Well, it's going alphabetical order. Blessington?
Aye.
Ms. Borat?
Aye.
Erica Waschinsky, aye. Thank you. Um, at our next meeting, um, I will be proposing our drumroll, wait for it, budget calendar. I know you're all excited. Liza's already shaking. I know it feels like we just finished budget season, but it's starting again.
Nope, can't do it.
All right. So I'm going to give you our uh, my COVID update. So as of today, Wellington um has thirty-two total COVID positives. So we've had a few um upticks. We were at thirty on Friday. Um, and we're at thirty-two today. So at least between Friday and today, we had two positive cases reported and two probable cases. So depending on where you see them reported, um, they would either say thirty-two or thirty-four. When Eastern Highlands reports to me, they include the probables. But the state numbers that the governor's office puts out separates positives from probables. So if you see it um differentiated, that's why. Um, I have received a couple of questions from residents um about whether or not we would set up a COVID testing site here in town and maybe why we haven't. Some of our neighboring towns have, um, most notably in um Mansfield. And most of that is due to the nature of the diverse population there with the university. So I reached out and, and I've been working with Eastern Highlands to determine, excuse me, if it's viable or necessary for us to set up um a site here in Wellington, whether it be for a day or, or two days. So the current guidance is that it's based on population and community need. So um currently, the numbers of Wellington don't warrant setting up a temporary testing site here now. Uh, but if our status were to change, if we were to go from the gray um that we're in now to an orange or a red town, then we would be working with DPH or Eastern Highlands to determine if we needed to move in a different direction. So as of right now, there's no need for us to, we're not doing a disservice to our residents. Um, it would, it could possibly put um a strain on some testing sites if we set up one unnecessarily. Um, and there are many options for testing in our area. Um, and I'll continue to share those that um come to us, especially as they're upticks in towns and we see towns changing their status and their, their new color statuses. And continue to direct people to the two-on-one site to find a testing site. Again, if we see a sudden spike, I will begin the discussion um with our health district and DPH again. So um if, if folks ask that question, that's the, the answer we've been given. Um, the travel ban um on Friday, when I wrote this, was up to forty-two states and, and territories. Um, we're encouraging residents to be mindful of their non-essential travel um and be aware of the executive order for mandatory, mandatory self-quarantine. You're being asked to um quarantine for fourteen days um or receive a test if you're an essential worker. And that, all of that information is on the state's coronavirus um portal, which is shared on our website and will continue to share that. I want to talk about um some election day changes that you're going to see here specifically due to COVID. Um, this, the town office building is being used for absentee ballot counting and election day registration. So this means that we're going to have an influx of poll workers here in this building um and residents who are going to come here. They come here and register to vote if they have not registered already and vote here in our office. Because of spacing and social distancing, we have multiple locations on the first floor that are being used for that purpose. For example, the tax, um, in this wing, the tax counter and the counter outside of Heather's office will be used along with the table in the selectman's conference room outside of my office for folks to um do their same-day registration and voting on. So because we needed those spaces for people to use, um, we um aren't open to the public for in-person business tomorrow. So all of our offices are closed to appointments. But we are available by phone or email. And so we did put that out in an election day update um on Friday for folks to know. So, you know, just so you know, staff will be in the office and working um and available by phone. Um, we're just not doing any in-person business. Um, and, and we hope that our residents understand. Our building is not spacious um to the point where we could really keep folks um apart. So um that's our process for tomorrow, but staff will be here in the building. Um, and today at the governor's press conference, this was just at four o'clock. I'm waiting for the written recommendations or, or written um documents. the written recommendations or written documents, so I can share them out. The Governor announced he's doing a bit of a rollback. He's calling it Phase 2.1, and it will go into effect this Friday, October 6, I'm sorry, still in October, November 6. Some of the things that will mean is 50% capacity for indoor dining, rolling back from Phase 3 at 75%, a 9:30 curfew for those restaurants that would be serving alcohol inside. It won't affect takeout or delivery. They could stay open past 9:30. Religious services will be cut back to 50% capacity with a cap of 100 people. Currently, he's saying that personal services such as hair salons, nail salons, and barber shops can stay at 75% capacity. So we do have a few of those businesses here in town. Governor Lamont is also recommending, it's a recommendation, that Connecticut residents stay home from 10:00 PM until 5:00 AM. He said at this point, he's not considering making this curfew a requirement, but it's a strong recommendation. And obviously, there would be, you know, some caveats to that if you are a night worker and you leave for work at, you know, 3:00 AM for your 4:00 or 5:00 AM shift, depending on your commute, or if you're coming home from those times. He's, you know, trying to limit those late-hour social gatherings that I think we've seen an uptick in different parts of the state. So we'll share that information out with folks. But it does affect some of our, you know, small businesses here in town, our restaurants going back to inside capacity at 50%. And most of them, I believe the Wellington Pizza, both locations are suspending their outdoor dining at this point. Most of it is weather-related. We can't imagine anyone, like on Friday, eating outside in those conditions in open air. So, you know, want to encourage people to still support our local businesses as much as they can, you know, as they support us through, through most time. So if you're able to, you know, takeout is available to them, and they do have delivery service, so we want to keep them in mind. Any questions COVID-specific?
I think, again, encouraging folks to, as much as possible, maybe for Christmas presents this year, holiday presents this year, buying gift certificates to our local businesses for folks, because I know that going backwards is going to be a really big struggle for our small businesses in town.
It is. You know, with the lack of federal funding right now, I'm hoping that at the federal level, they can kind of get things together and, and see that there's a need to support these small businesses. You know, the, the direction that the Governor has gone in and other governors across the country have done is to keep all of us safe, our residents safe. So I think at this point, we need to recognize that there's some help needed. The Governor did speak about some options for funding for small businesses and encouraging people to take advantage of that. So through NBC, we'll continue to share some of that information. I think it's important, as important to support them, our, our local farms, whatever we can do. I know that in my family's travels, we try to keep it local, and so we're not supporting all of the restaurants we would have typically in our larger area, trying to stick to here in town. I'm not sure I can consume much more Wellington pizza. I do keep trying. So everybody grab a pizza and, and visit Hilltop, and, you know, you need some breakfast, head down to the River and Rail and support these businesses as much as you can. There are many other small businesses here in Wellington, not just the restaurants. But right now, they're taking the, the hit to capacities inside, and outdoor dining is just really difficult. Once you put up a tent with four sides, you're talking about inside, and so it's, the limitations are there. So I will keep you posted. I cross my fingers every Thursday is when the update from the state comes out, and the new color-coded chart, whether or not you're in the red-orange zone. In Wellington, thankfully, although our numbers have prepped up, have stayed small enough, knock on wood, right now that we're not in that area. And if we are, we have to make decisions about whether or not we roll back. Now that the Governor has gone back to this 2.1, I'm not sure where that stands. So we'll look for more guidance. I have statewide call on Wednesday afternoon and then Thursday that information will come out. So I'll keep you posted. All right, if no other information, I'll move forward, or question, I'll move forward to present to speak. Anyone on the line wishing to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone present to speak? Going once, going twice. You can always reach out to the Selectmen's Office via phone or email and share your thoughts and concerns. I encourage that. All right, good and welfare. So last time I'm going to say it, I promise, our polling location for tomorrow's 2020 presidential election is at Hall Memorial School Gymnasium. Voting begins at 6:00 AM and ends at 8:00 PM. It ends at 8:00 PM at the line. Anyone in line at 8:00 PM will be allowed to vote. And absentee ballots will be counted here at the Town Office Building. Eastern Highlands and Department of Health is hosting a free drive-in flu clinic this Saturday, September, September, and I'm going way back, November 7, at Mansfield Middle School. The worst part is I have it written down. This is only for adult vaccine doses. There'll be no high dose or pediatric doses. So if we had some seniors who are looking for that high-dose vaccine, or if you need a pediatric dose, this will only be adult doses.
Erica, can I ask you one quick thing about, about election day? It might be well-publicized, and I just haven't seen it. Is there going to be any public reading of the final Wellington tally tomorrow? Do you know how that's going to work in terms of results?
Here, at the school, the outer hallway in the gymnasium will be open for the public and media. Obviously, social distancing is an issue. So we'd ask, does it folks limit the amount of people there as soon as? I know the results, I'll post them on our website and social media, and the registrar as well. There, there will be, you know, that's a number of people voting. And then, so you could go into there, it is open to the public. We'd ask that the results will be posted, and so that you'll be able to see them. So the strip that we typically see here in the room will be in that outer room. They're going to have the gym closed as they work feverishly to clean our things out of the gym so that it can get cleaned, so the school can be used the next morning. So that will take some time. So they will bring the results out into the hallway, and that's where they will be public. So it asks that if anyone wanted to go in to see the results, maybe they go in, see them, you know, you can take a picture of the strip if you'd like, and then leave and allow for other folks to go in. So.
Any thought of a public reading of it, like on Facebook Live or anything?
They haven't spoke of that. I can always ask the registrars for it. I don't know that either of them do that kind of social media, so we can look into that. It's possible. And I don't know that they'll have everything tab, a final count, that would be the count for in-person voting.
Right.
Then here will be absentee voting, and then here will be same-day registration. And keep in mind, when I talk to you about the 981 absentee ballot, they've all been processed as such, they've been received. They won't be opened and counted until tomorrow. In our last, excuse me, presidential election, they had 156 absentee ballots to go through. So this is a much larger undertaking, for sure. So I'll look into that, and if I know early in the day that that's a possibility, I'll post on our social media that we can do that. Our humans, Jenny, our Human Services Director, put together two drive-through flu clinics with CVS. So one of our residents, our local resident, is a pharmacist at CVS, and he and his wife worked here to set up two clinics. One was at the Senior Center for Seniors Only, so that was the high-dose vaccine, where they were able to deliver 25 vaccines. And then last week, held a flu clinic for general Wellington population, and also had those high-dose vaccines there. And we had been, were able to administer 41 flu vaccines to residents. So we did learn that this was only the second time CVS, CVS, think about how large they are, had set up drive-through clinics, and the first one was in North Dakota. So unprecedented times, I mean, things that we've never done before. And so, you know, want to thank Jenny for taking the initiative to set that up, and we were able to get 66 folks here flu vaccines. So still encouraging people to get a flu vaccine this year. We expect flu season to be above average, and when you add in COVID, there's a concern. There are, there are three potential openings on CIP, one for sure we know about. So if anyone's interested in being, serving on CIP, that's the Capital Improvement Plan Committee, contact the Selectmen's Office. We will begin sometime in November, and these appointments would begin in December. I want to mention that Maureen, our Parks and Rec Director, has set up a new program called the Great Pumpkin Compost. So if you have, you want to get rid of your pumpkins and jack-o'-lanterns, we're going to collect them here and then donate them to Ghost Farm Homestead Farm here in Wellington, where they will be composted and then used to grow food that's then sold locally. So there's a bin outside the Parks and Rec Department where you can put, you can drop off your pumpkins. If you're looking to get rid of them, rather than throw them in the backyard and let them rot there, compost them will, they'll be used to grow locally sold food. Get to clean out your pumpkin first, so clean out your candles. And if your pumpkin unfortunately had paint or glitter on it, we can't accept those because it would contaminate the compost. So although those are creative, they, they will not be good. So the donations will be accepted until November 20th. We shared this on our social media and website, and we'll do it again. So it's a great new program, Maureen, set up for us. We had our first-ever Halloween contest, so we asked residents to submit their home decorating for fall or Halloween. And a group of individuals from the Town Office Building went out and judged, and we today presented our winners with gift certificates to Wellington Pizza. So I'd like to congratulate, and third place was Sean McHugh. He's in the St. Moritz Lucerne area with, it was a fantastic display. So we did talk about sharing locations, if folks are okay with that, if we do this again, so you can go by and take a look at them. Maureen made a video, so you can see it. Second place, I see her right here on our meeting, Karen Ann Caldwell. It was a fantastic science-themed, a mad scientist-themed display. And our first-place winner was Lindsay Lacoste and the Lacoste family there. They might live next door to Selectmen Borat. They had a beautiful Halloween and fall display out there, so they definitely went all out. I heard on Halloween night, it was even more than what we were able to see. So they were all great. It was tough to choose. It was a tough job for us. Look, sometimes we really have to do the really tough jobs around here. So I want to thank everyone who entered.
Can I say one thing, which I think, so the, the Lacoste family is phenomenal. They're wonderful neighbors. They do wonderful decorations for many holidays. The most impressive part, I will tell you, is the day after Halloween, everything's gone.
Yes.
So they put it up, like, quickly and efficiently. They take it down. There's no sign of it today. It's amazing. So I sit, meanwhile, like, I think I still have, like, some ornaments up from last year's Christmas.
I may have seen your pumpkin in the road, blowing around in the road this afternoon. We went to take pictures with the families, and two out of the three had their Halloween decorations still up. The Lacoste family did not, but the fall front steps still look beautiful, so we took a photograph out there. So Maureen in Parks and Rec set this up. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be here today to, to give them all their prizes, but she worked hard to put together something that in these unusual COVID times, we could give back a little bit to our community. And so I want to thank her for that, and thank everyone who participated. I did get some feedback from our winners, that, you know, a couple of things were asking if we could give out the addresses of those so that everyone could drive by and see. And so we'll look into that. If they're willing to share their address and have lots of looker, looky-loos, I say, why not? It was great. Hope everyone can see what we saw. So it's a lot of spirit. Stay tuned. Maureen is thinking about doing this for other holidays coming up, as we, you know, have to look outside of our traditional holiday festivities. Last, I know we've talked a lot about elections. I cannot say enough. I need to take a minute to thank our registrars of voters, Suzanne Chapman, Christine Sathas, and their deputies, the Town Clerk staff, Robin Campbell, Rachel Pierce, Maureen Gantik, and Sue Litwin. Maureen and Sue helped us on a temporary basis for the tremendous work and effort they've done to ensure a safe and fair election here in Wellington. I can't explain to you the countless hours these folks put in, in these unprecedented times. These type of events don't just happen, and I, for one, appreciate the work they do every day so that we can all exercise our right to vote. So please, if you're planning to vote in person, know that it is safe. Wear your mask, be patient, and most of all, be respectful to your fellow residents at the polls. But, but this group, just the work that they have done tirelessly, I hope they get a few hours of sleep tonight, because they've definitely put everything in it, and our town is better for having them serve here. So I don't know about other cities and other towns and what their concerns are, but I have no doubt our election will go off flawlessly with the work that this group of people have done. So with that, unless you all have something you'd like to share for good and welfare? No? Okay. I would then entertain, as my lights go out, a motion to adjourn.
I'll second, Blessington.
All right, this is a non-debatable issue, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, Waschinsky.
Aye, Blessington.
All right, if you voted already, have a good night. If you haven't voted, rest tight, and you can vote between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
Yeah.
All right, Heather, you can stop the recording.